I'm going to call and order this meeting. The Plain Township Trusted Trustees for Tuesday, July 8th, 2014. If everybody will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us, we have our agenda as presented. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, did you bring that letter?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda? Okay, good.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think I brought five to 55th Street for this.
Do we have any other changes?
Okay, the agenda will stand as of now. Please note that we will have to stop wherever we're at in the meeting for a 6:15 public hearing on a zoning amendment. We will start with the Sheriff's report. I don't have anything here on the agenda. However, is there anyone in the crowd that wishes to address the Sheriff's office with any matters? Could you just state your name and your address in the record for the fiscal officer?
Okay. Going to do it right now?
Yeah, you can go ahead right now.
Barry Miller. I'm the general manager of the Knights Inn Hotel. 3950 Convenience Circle, Northwest Canton, Ohio 44718. And I guess, is this a time to talk or no?
Yeah.
It is? Okay, wow. That's been a quick meeting for me, holy cow. Deputy, is it calling?
Yeah.
Is he out here? Yeah. And one of the narcotics officers was out visiting. Narcotics officer, I've met him a number of times. Relationship there. But I've got some questions about the, I guess we'd call it ordinance, is that what we're referring to, about the records that we keep at the hotels? And I understand that Jackson Township also has a requirement of this type, ordinance of this type. Our company, Alliance Hospitality, also owns a microtel, which is in Jackson Township. If I could address just a couple of things. Section 101, Registration Requirements. Last sentence about traveling in a motor vehicle, license number and owner of such vehicles should be recorded. I think that the circumstances are physically where we are in the lobby, or working during the day, or at night, or we work behind a window. It's very difficult to ascertain motor vehicle or no vehicle at times. We have people take public transportation to the property. We have people that take no transportation to the property and walk there. I think it's a challenge for us to determine sometimes the motor vehicle and/or the license number and owner of such vehicle. I don't know if you're given, what we've been doing ever since the visit by the deputy was to get the license plate and the type of motor vehicle is, Ford Chevrolet, that type of thing. So we've been trying to comply in that respect. But it's kind of a, how shall I say, a challenge for us to meet this requirement for every guest because of how they arrive at the property. And I really don't know how I find out if somebody owns the vehicle that they're in or what the situation is. I don't know how we can do that. Because we're probably not going to ask for ownership papers or that type of thing, I don't think. Section 102, Retention Requirements. And as I was said by the fellow, the officer that was with the detective, if there's anybody that tries to meet the needs of law enforcement, it's been Knights Inn. And I appreciate him saying that. When it comes to retention requirements, the phrase in there, "open it for inspection any time," is a challenge because these documents, as I understand it, and I'm not a lawyer, they are the property of the hotel, the hotel's documents. And there is a strong suggestion in law, in case law, even federal law, that if information is needed by law enforcement, that some type of warrant is required to get this information. Now, I guess what I've done, you know, is looking at the clear and present danger situation. If an officer approaches me and says, "Somehow so might we think someone who has a gun," I'll just use that as an example, there's a clear and present danger to the person, to the staff, to the other guests, and that type of thing, there's certainly immediate cooperation along that line. As opposed to walking in and saying, "I need everything from 30 days ago," which is just a blanket, you know, accumulation of records or everything from the past. I don't know where you stop with that. Everything for the, all of the last 30 days. I don't know where you stop with that either. So that's a little bit of a concern, open for inspection, and you know, how far does that go? It's open to interpretation, everything. And probably the, one of the last things is the penalty. It's a concern to myself and the staff that based on some of the issues I brought up in section 101 and 102, how it's determined that there is a violation of the legislation and who's going to pay the $500. In most cases, people at the front desk in this industry, hospitality industry, make less than 10 bucks an hour. And somebody that's diligent and trying to do the right thing and trying to accumulate the proper amount of information, and there's no disagreement about the information you're asking for, for the most part, I'm just saying it's a challenge to get ownership of a vehicle and figure that out. But there's really no disagreement overall about accumulating the information. But if there is a mistake, if there's a typo, so to speak, or something isn't, we don't have the right license plate number, we missed a letter, we missed a number, is that what opens it up to $500 fine? You know, that's the question we have. Where do you begin with that? I mean, you know, it's just something that's a real, real concern to people that are, you know, working and in contact with the public. So I guess I had three points. I've made them, but I don't know if there's any, is this a time for dotting discussion or not? I don't know.
Sure. You know, first, I want to say, we've always, or we've never had an issue with the Knights Inn. You guys have always been cooperative.
Thank you.
And just really great when we, when we've asked you of things. Unfortunately, some other hotels in the township, and that's the whole reason that this came about. Just like we told you the day that we went over this, you know, it unfortunately, it puts everybody on a level playing field, and the guys that are already helping us, it kind of punishes them a little bit, unfortunately. But we have to give it to everyone and treat them all the same. You know, the retention with going in and examining those, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's going to be the responsibility of each hotel to make sure that those records are being maintained properly. If somebody that is on your staff is not following it, then it would be your responsibility to make sure that they are getting the proper information that we're requesting in that resolution.
Excuse me, but there aren't many details. There aren't many details about crossing the T and the dot in the I. And I don't think I said much about, I don't want to get argue about it, but I didn't say much about retention of the documents. It's accessibility of the documents that's concerned to us as far as at what point you might request, one day, 30 days, and how far back, and you know, what's the timeliness of it, that type of thing.
Well, I mean, I think the retention period is three.
Yeah.
Three years.
Yeah.
So really, I mean, if the retention is three years, I mean, we may come in and ask one day to look back two and a half years from now. There may be a case that, you know, and that's really, it's a tool for the cases that we work.
Okay.
That's the only reason that we would come in and ask for those documents. We're not looking at doing spot checks. Okay, we're not making sure so we can ding you with that, with that penalty. This really is a tool for investigative purpose. And if we don't have investigative purpose, we're not going to come in and request those documents. But like I said, unfortunately, some of the other businesses are very uncooperative in that matter. You have not been. You guys have been great. In regard to the vehicle, I mean, if they come in, you know, you can do the best job that you can. If you note somewhere in, you know, where you're keeping these records.
Right place to do that, yeah.
You know, they came in in a cab. I mean, it is what it is. Again, we're not looking for reasons to penalize you. It's all for investigative purpose. And, and I don't really see an issue with the Knights Inn. I mean, like I said, you guys have been great. You're doing what you can and you'll continue to do so.
What about the guy in the place of you?
Well, I mean.
He might feel differently about all this.
Well, but Bill is speaking for the Board of Trustees.
Sure, sure.
And so, your question about if somebody would make a mistake and write an A where it should have been a G, there is a good faith effort that's being made by that employee, and there's also a reasonableness.
That's what I'm looking for.
So there is a reasonableness.
That phrase, good faith effort, I wish that phrase were in here.
And there's a good faith effort.
Well, it's on record now, so.
It's on record now.
Okay.
So there is a good faith effort. Like Bill said, they're not looking to ding you, and if they would come in and say, "We need to go through two and a half years of records," they're not going to expect it to be within 30 seconds.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're also not going to wait, you know, three months, but there's a reasonableness.
And I think the whole reason why the other officer had come with me, he's from Jackson Township. They implemented this a couple of months ago. And really, the only people that I can foresee coming in there for investigative purposes is either going to be somebody from his division or a detective coming in, looking in further that understands the resolution. And I know that Metro is very, you know, Lieutenant Oliver understands the resolution and understands why it's in place and the purpose of it.
Sure.
And that's really, you know, you're only going to be dealing with me or my replacement or, you know, somebody with, with Metro that has understanding of the resolution and the purpose of the resolution.
Well, we had a situation within the last six months involving a criminal narcotics officer. And because of the nature of it, I mean, it was probably worked out for him and for us, and he was working with some of the local folks, to actually get a subpoena and search out their records based on the information in a subpoena, which in that particular case would have a specific name in it, as opposed to looking at 60 names from March the 2nd and just perusing through that. That's, that's a little bit different than getting a subpoena, which is really, you come right from the court, it's a warrant and everything like that. We're a lot more comfortable with that type of thing because we get paid for guests, you know, to come back at us and, you know, say that we're just handing information out.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there is definitely, like I said, investigative purpose for this. And this resolution was, it was modeled after Jackson, but this, this resolution that you have is, is not modeled after what Jackson has. It's being done all over the state in Township. So this wasn't just based on that one resolution in the Jackson Township. Jackson actually based it off another area in the state where they started to utilize this. And it's, you know, it's fairly popular, apparently, because it's made it all the way up.
In this case, but that was. And also, I mean, if, you know, you're worried about that with your customers, it's putting some type of notice on the window where they check in, let them know that the information is subject, you know, to this resolution.
Actually, the customers right now, as we've asked for some additional information, in some cases, you know, over the years, this is just same stuff we've been doing already. But some of the people we're indicating to, we've had no resistance probably from the customers.
No, as long as they know that, and at the time you have posted on your.
Well, we hesitate to put too much up. I mean, you know what I mean? I don't want to put too much up about law enforcement to my customers. They might get a little nervous. Some of them, more than others. Yeah. That's why we try to keep a good relationship with the Sheriff Department, as far as I would go. I do appreciate your comments. I do think that the $500, the digging amount, as I said, the people make generally under $10 an hour, it's pretty, you know, they're, they get a little bit uptight, but I think that somebody might come out and, although most of my people certainly have a pretty good rapport with your folks and over the years, and I've got some very experienced people, I just think they want some reassurance. I think your phrasing right there gives them a lot. What was that phrase again that you?
It's a good, is, if they're, is a good faith effort.
Good faith effort.
Yes. And, you know, again, mistakes are going to be made, but they're not going to be held accountable for typos or.
Allegiance.
Unless right.
Allegiance.
Where we have it here is exactly.
Disregard.
There's a total disregard for the resolution or.
Yeah, they didn't have any of the information.
My object here is to just have a dialogue.
Yeah.
And I think that we got the impression from me, I hope that we were complying 100% with it. And everybody's worked with me, and that's over 30 years, and I spent time in the 80s in Township. Come back here again the last 11 years, and we are going to be in compliance with it. I just felt I need to air some of these things out and get a response from you. And I appreciate what I have.
Yes, we can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll go back.
Just one real quick question. The fine itself, is that subject, the person subject to penalty on their fine, is that the individual working the desk, is that the hotel in general?
I believe it's the hotel.
It's the hotel.
It's the hotel.
But however the hotel chooses to handle it, just up to the hotel.
It'd be up to the hotel.
Yeah.
Okay.
The hotel has to pay it, but. And Barry, do you have another card? Because I gave mine to the board.
Sure.
Oh, thank you. And if you have questions in the future, don't hesitate to call me.
Yeah. And thanks for letting me speak at this time in the meeting. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't have any trouble finding a parking place. Thanks for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that's going to close out the Sheriff's report. We do have to adjourn from our regular meeting to go to our public hearing for 6:15 PM for zoning amendment number 556. Let's see here. Do we just need to read this into the?
This is just.
In the.
Right.
Yeah. Do we have anybody that's in attendance that's looking to speak in support or opposition to zoning amendment number 556? Okay. I'll make a motion. Whereas Plain Township Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on zoning amendment number 556 on June 11th, 2014, whereas the Plain Township Zoning Commission is recommending approval of the proposed amendment, and whereas Plain Township Zoning Commission is submitting such recommendation along with application to actually maintain thereto the Plain Township Board of Trustees within the required 30 days following its public hearing. Not be hereby resolved, but Plain Township Board of Trustees, County Ohio. Wow, like this resolution doesn't set the public date for today at 6:15. Doesn't make sense to.
I, well, you're reading the wrong one.
It's right on the top.
That was, no, the back, I'm sorry, the resolution is in here.
Hey, you want to read this here?
No, it's free.
Okay, I apologize for the record. So I'm going to make a motion on amendment 556. Whereas Plain Township Board of Trustees adopts the recommendation of the Plain Township Zoning Commission for approval.
I'll second that.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lee.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Gevasis.
Yes.
And Mr. Hopp. Yes. That will actually conclude the public hearing on zoning amendment 556. And that's at 6:18. So we'll go back to our regular meeting here. Yes.
If you don't mind me opening the shares real quick, I had, I guess we come up with shit. I could put a question regarding 1650 Firestone. I did get another email from Mr., is it Mr. Keely? Kylie at 1650. Neatly called Lisa. Lisa got it right away. Sergeant Sperrin, everybody got it right away. Everybody's, everybody's communicating, trying to help this person out on Firestone. I guess the question I have is, since I've been a trustee, this Firestone has been, Lou, he wasn't here yet, but Firestone has been an issue. If it's one road that somebody will bring up with me, I'd say Firestone has been my biggest complaint. You remember the lady that lived just prior north of them? Then she came in several times, petitioned people. That street just seems to be a thorn in our side. And like I said, we have full cooperation with sheriffs. I would just like to ask that, and I don't want to step on sheriff's toes because it's not, definitely not in charge of sheriffs, but I am in charge of residents, the residents that call about those situations, that road, that if at any given time, our deputies have any free time, just to get that scare tactic out, I don't care how many they pan on Firestone, but if we got to the point where they were there once a week or once every two weeks, to a, to a pattern even for a month, I think that's going to put a fear on anyone on Firestone. Now we have to be careful. Because I give an example. I play golf at Tammy Shannon, and Danny, you probably there too. You can't run on hills and dills because you're worried about that officer always being there. Now, he's not there all the time now, but he's, he's had such a pattern that now you're worried that, is he there, is he there? I'd like to call their bluff on Firestone. At any given time, our deputies, if we're not on a call, I think in, I hope I'm not stepping on, we're just speaking behalf of the residents, because that road has just been a thorn in our side. That any given time, our deputies are out on an active call and that, that if they don't have a sitting place, that they just decide to perch because that's where they were told to go, then it really wasn't a complaint, then let's, can they focus on the road that's been a thorn in our side?
Let me ask you this question.
Absolutely.
Instead of taking an officer off his regular patrol route, what about getting off and getting an extra deputy at situations like that would come up like Firestone and placing that extra deputy out there on that road simply for traffic enforcement? Can you maybe give with the sheriff and find out what that cost would be for the township to put an extra car out there for certain times if we have high.
Well, I can call Jessica.
Yeah.
I can actually call Jessica and schedule that. I can take care of that.
Yeah. I mean, instead of taking the deputy off of his normal patrol.
Right.
I can get some shifts.
Quadrant, in his quadrant, basically.
Maybe look at some various times of the day.
Times of the week.
Various places, they tell them, those are the events.
Mix it up.
They're going to be so gunshot, they're going to finally, finally start obeying that speed limit.
Right. Good idea. They're going to park in different spots on Firestone a few days a week, different times, for several hours. You know, if he has to, right to 300 speeding tickets.
Right.
Sooner or later, the word's going to get out.
Detective Connor, who would I talk to about the various shifts and times? Who would?
I mean, that, that would be something that you could, you know, we could sit down and come up with, and, and you could let, if you're going to call Jessica with it and just say.
Yeah, I just will call her and tell her the shifts and times.
You know, whatever, whatever days of the week that you're interested, and I would, and like I said, I would mix it up and maybe do a morning or a late afternoon, you know, however, you know, it's all dependent on what do you want.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, that way we can.
That's really what it is.
Yeah, nice meeting issues that we can place a deputy out there individually to focus on.
That's a great idea.
Traffic enforcement.
Detective Connor, don't we have a speed zone study done in our buggy on that road? Maybe we can.
Yeah, we do.
Better determine the times.
Yeah, if we refer to that and we could, we could go through, I mean, I know during the school, when school was there, we know sometimes where it was early in the morning and late in the afternoon. But with summer hours, you know, I mean, we, we could use that as a model and kind of go off that regardless, because I'm sure.
We throw it out there again for a few days.
A lot of times it slows the traffic down too.
Right. I mean, I.
That helps because you want the traffic to slow down.
I think once they're out there enough that, that I think that now people are just going to be saying, are they there today or not? And I think that'll put a stop to it, because it's just, I don't know why they have to speed down the road, but they do. Anyone, I always said before, it's just such an inconsideration to people that they know this is an allotment, they know that there's homes, and they've got to go flying through those, it's just.
And I'm sure it's, it's being used as a cut through.
Sure.
For people going to work, you know what I mean? So, I mean, you know, if, I would at least recommend a morning.
Yeah.
And then a couple of days later, maybe an afternoon or a couple mornings, then a couple afternoons, just kind of mix it up so, like you said, they're not really expecting it, and they don't know that they're going to be there.
Can find a couple of different places to park.
I know Mr. Crowley's residence is, he's allowed us to sit in his driveway, at least at the very minimum, so.
Yeah, because we, let's, our, you guys are, our cooperation is awesome, it's just, it's excellent. You just, if this has just been, since I've been, Lou can say that that road just keeps coming out all the time, Firestone.
Okay.
It's one of my favorites for the.
Yeah, yeah, you've got some great ideas.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jen.
That will move us on to our detective's report. Keep that with the detective coming.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome to the bucket.
I have the monthly report for June. Our calls for service, like I said, next July is going to be, when we do July's report, we can actually put July 2014 against July 2013 and see our increase. As of right now, you know, June compared to May, I think it was about a 29% increase in call volume. We had 949 calls for service. It was a pretty good jump from May.
I can say it was seven, so.
Seven, I think it was 735. So, yeah, just about a 29% increase in call volume from May to June, which summer's here, so. We had 62 crashes, nine crashes with injury. The alarms were up from May, about, we had 134 alarms. And, you know, this, this call increase directly affected our traffic stops, because our traffic stops from June, from May to June were way down. We had 100 stops and 73 citations. 50 arrests for the month with 37 bookings and 13 summonses. I conducted 19 follow-up investigations with four closed cases. So, yeah, July, or when we do the report in August, you know, we could actually, July was the first month that we did, that we started this, so we can kind of overlay July 2014 to July 2013 and get a much better representation of all month of March.
Perfect. Close out the detective's report. Thank you. It's going to take us to unfinished business. I'm going to turn that over to our minister, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Unfinished business, at this time I will turn over to Mr. Iostino.
Mrs. Campbell, put together this resolution for the board if they wish to put an additional road levy on the ballot November 4th for general election. I do believe we can start that.
Can I let me get my chair? You took the mail we got from the auditor.
Yeah, it is. I did work with the auditor's office, who has been fantastic as far as when we actually can start collecting it. So, just so you know, the effective years and the tax years are correct. The revised code section is correct for an additional. And I did have Paul Ricard with Kelly Campbell Williams look at over, and also the auditor's office. So the resolution itself is good.
The 1.5 mils would generate $996,732 to the resident.
What is that again?
996,732. And it would cost the owner of a $100,000 market value home $52.50 per year.
Now, the tax value is.
52.
52.50.
52.50 on $100,000 a home value. Essentially, the tax, so the tax would be.
That's 35,000 for the tax value, $100,000.
For the public speaks purposes, they understand in relationship with their, they feel their house is self-praised by the home, they understand taxable.
All right. It's a matter of, if the board decides to report this, we need to take that business housing with people. We need to educate the people. That's in the newsletter or something, or public hearing.
I'm going to move on to new business, or unfinished business, number one. Just for further discussion, I think the record needs to reflect again what you presented at the last meeting for our session, Joe. The fact that the reason we're seeking the money from the public is in fact that within the last, it's less than seven years, seven years, we went from being able to pave 14 miles roadway down to eighth is board through your efforts, engaging outside resources. We've leveraged different types of paving techniques, whether it's materials, micro, whether it's materials, micro-surfacing, and so forth, through some of our equipment down there. 20 to 25 years old, we've went through replacing beds, replacing cabs, replacing, possibly now where the frames on some of these, it's not going to be safe to be able to.
Not as frontline vehicles, right?
Yeah, as frontline vehicles. Actually, as Mr. Gevasis pointed out, it's actually not, not, over the last nine, nine years. So, the intent in this request for the additional is to help catch back up over a period of time, our road paving, road paving, but as well, to be able to maintain a feasible equipment replacement schedule. So, when it's snowing in two years from now, because it's not going through this year, I'm going to go on after this.
Oh, it's bad.
Yeah, but you know what, that means we're going to have those, you're going to be right there.
That's right.
That money's going to go to allow us to replace trucks on a timely, timely schedule. So, we're not in a situation where we've got all this shit in essentially its junkyard shape, and then you have to replace them all at once, and then at some point in the future, all that expense comes around, and it all adds up again. So, this is for.
You know, we tried to keep it for years, we kept it on a 10-year rotation basis of replacing, re-assizing our roads and. We're probably looking at 18 years now if we hit this pace, and that's just going to get worse. It's not going to get better if we don't get more money. Those numbers, as you know, they go by the fuel cost, and those numbers keep on, if our money stays the same.
I think outside of speaking to those points and those efforts, I mean, I think collectively as a board, as a board for the people, you know, whether we do some public information sessions or just make this a, you know, maybe we've got like a little blog or something on our website, you know, because I know I had folks that asked, you know, the last one we had, somebody from the media, hey, what are you looking to do, do with this, why are you looking? I openly said, I encourage any resident to contact Township. Township Hall, talk to the administrator, the road superintendent, or anybody on this board, and we'll go down through that list of everything that we've done within our control.
Slows.
Yeah, other costs.
Curbing gutters alone, that we can replace a million dollars of those this year if we wanted to. It's, they're not getting done, we're patching them. It's, we have the money for five years, we can't keep moving.
Well, they had better ideas so people understand the difference in costs today versus it was back in 2005 when this was originally best. We're spending exactly the same amount on paving, $700,000 a year, and we were doing, what, 15 miles? 14? Okay, 14 miles. We're doing this eight miles for the same dollar amount today.
Minus curb and gutter.
Minus curb and gutter. So, it's increasing materials, basically, that's, it's lived itself.
Plus the fact that that dollar amount took into account our use of micro-surfacing, which technically helps stretch some of that mileage. So, we would have done traditional.
It would have been.
This year we used the rubberized and this year to try to stretch that dollar to get that.
He brings up a good point, if we went to use the micro-surfacing or the rubberized, what would they take us down to, five?
We'd probably be down to five or six miles max.
Let's take a long way.
Yeah, we'd hurt 74 miles. There's a lot of roads that, you know, I've gotten phone calls over the last couple of weeks since we put them on the website, complaining why my road's not getting gunned and you're doing this. And they're probably 100% right, that road might be just bad. But we ended up going to the point where how much traffic is on these roads? What's getting the most use, we need to get those roads, you know, in the best shape, you know, the sterner roads, you know, the main arteries. And we're doing our best to, you know, try to spread it out throughout the township, trying to get a little bit everywhere. Without.
Is this the levy bringing down?
Nine ninety-eight, yes, some change, but I'm not sure exactly. I have it somewhere in here.
Here it is, it's pretty close.
Yeah.
If we could, I mean, instead of a long wordy thing, I think also for the public viewing, so they can see exactly what we're bringing in now versus what we're spending, but including putting that on the website, on, under the road department.
And that's not a monthly call, that's a year, you know what I mean?
No, so people can see the breakdown of what we're spending.
Right, we have that pie chart, we have a pie chart for the whole township, which was planned for schools, fire, road.
So, they can see what those stores are paving, like those stores' equipment, what's going towards curb and gutter, what's, you know.
Essentially what we're asking, essentially on $100,000 a home valuation, we're asking resident for $4.30 a month to try to catch back.
Yeah, and I think the last newsletter I did it, like, I wrote the article like that. So, they could understand it like that, and that's what we're going to do, that's what we're going to do this time too.
But that also covers all the costs, you know, the salt, plowing, sweeping, you know.
That's why we give a breakdown on the ones.
To do all those services, yes, it's not just this one, yeah.
You understand, on the road departments page, it's put a breakdown of what salt, sweeping, you know, storm, drainage, that type of stuff. So, people can see how that money, that last levy's actually being used.
Your budget, your budget, $100,000 already, Jason.
I was looking at my budget today, we've spent $60,000 for the project, just patching holes since then. And that's kind of what I had budgeted for a whole year, so. That's a lot of money just to patch holes.
Yeah.
Was there any further discussion before roll call? Roll call, Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you. It's going to take us to new business and then turn that over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you, item number one is a liquor request for the EBS Pub and Party Center at 1211 39th Street, Northeast, Suite B. This is the.
Rappers?
Yeah.
Public parlor.
Yes.
That's just a change in the, is that not already?
Yeah, it's a.
It's a new.
No, it's new, yeah.
Do we, can we check what the sheriff saw?
Yeah, yes, and there's no issues, and I know there's been, you know, the one person complaining of no worries, but.
It's not alcohol.
It's not alcohol related, I know what we went through with the other place where we actually had gun violence issues, and they didn't, and it's happening again, and they didn't take their liquor license. This is nothing that's going to hold any water, so, yeah.
Can we pass it, pass it, pass it all through the.
Okay. And item number two are the false alarms.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Was that Mr. Lina on the side?
I did, yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And then item number three is a resolution to enter into the attached memorandum of agreement by between the Plain Township Board of Trustees and the St. Dirk County Health Department for additional mosquito spraying at a rate of $26 per mile.
Also moved, just for discussion clarification, this will be on an additional as needs basis to which we'll be provided notifications, not blanket authorization.
Correct, yeah. I'll be starting to send you, and you've been getting, I think you got your first one of where the health department has started their spraying. We've had this contract, we've done it every year for the last probably five years, we've never had to use it. I think this will be the first year where we will have to use it. So, as you get complaints, if you will forward them to me, name, address, so I can keep my conversations open with the health department to see, have they sprayed there yet? Do they need to spray again? We'll keep that line communications open because it's a bad year. We are calling for any homeowner who has standing water in their yard. What they're doing is going out, evaluating it, their first goal is to get rid of the water. If not, they are dropping the adult aside. And they'll go back if it's water that just is not going the way to do it again. Especially if there is a neighbor, if there's a person who is next to somebody with a pond, they'll drop in the pond. I know in our zoning efforts, our crews, when they go out and they end up maintenance, find a pool, they'll let us know. And, you know, obviously, if it's an abandoned home, we'll contact the health department, drop the adult aside, it's just a bad year. So, just give me all the names, addresses, and we'll keep plugging along. We do have a letter in our newsletter, and our, hold on, our newsletter with the name and context of the health department, so. That's that.
Roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And that's the end of new business.
Okay, let's turn it over to fiscal officer, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda is a request for resolutions for the authorization of payment of pending warrants in an amount of $606,428.61.
Also moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Discussion number two is a request for a resolution for the payment of regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Discussion number three is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment of the following medical claims provided by Hope Care and Medical Mutual.
So moved for the pay. Second discussion. Medical Mutual, is this?
This is. This is for a couple of claims apparently in April 2013 that they denied that they should have.
Correct, and, yeah, and, yeah, and we may see, I know that they expired, the runout was through May 31st, and we may see a couple more that they denied in May and they should have paid. So, I'm working on a few of those, I don't know if it was, you know, the end of the contract and they figured, we're done, we're denying, but they wish to pay, so.
Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Discussion number four is the financial report. Fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution to authorize the following transfers.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
That'll conclude the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. I'm going to turn it back to our administrator for the administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Haas, I just have a resolution for the trustees to authorize payment of course of others' landscaping for June 2014 in an amount not to exceed $3,150 from Fund 01A26L.
Also moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Take us to our private department, I'm going to turn that over to Deputy Chief Schallberger.
Trustees, item number one is our monthly report.
Just a quick clarification, either I overlooked it. Is the average time to dispatch and the average reaction time, are those new metrics that have just been incorporated? I've never seen those.
Yeah, this, this month, we just started that with, since we went to a new ICANN system, we're able to capture some of those times, so, or we couldn't before on other systems, so.
Okay. That's actually correct, that's pretty serious. Yeah. Great.
Yeah, it really is.
Well, this response time at 4:13, that's less than a minute and five, average time to dispatch, or is that?
That includes your.
That includes.
Total response time to tow, so they're just breaking down average time to dispatch.
And then the.
The time for.
Into that. So, 45 seconds in the vehicle out of the building, 4 minutes 13 seconds there. That is nice.
How does that, the ICANN stuff?
Yeah, it's working out so well now, so we're starting to do more, more things with it. This is, I have other days of, you know, Captain Hanes and our IT guy, Scormers here, they're really working a lot on trying to get these, you know, all the information to be able to put on paper.
The first way, ultimately, is we work through this process to feed that, maybe through the website or something, is an informational. I'm sure it's probably to some, to somebody who are constituent, so it does a good, does good numbers, and be aware.
Or a minute and 13 cents, response time's fast.
Any other comments or comments? Okay, sure.
Item two is for purchase of fire hose to replace hoses that expire, did not need testing, so we're replacing some more.
So moved, second discussion. I'm trying to think, let me think.
That's 20 sections at 50 foot distance, a thousand, or a small one.
Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Item number three is just an informational, EMS grant, we got $2,500 from the State of Ohio under public safety grant. That's, that was from seatbelt fines and stuff like that for EMS equipment, so. So, that, that will be, it will be purchased from July 1st till June of next year. We've got to spend the money in the neighborhood versus for that.
Close fire, just going to take us to road department, turn that over to Mr. Iostino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the June monthly report. Any questions? Item number two is a resolution to contract construction for the 2014 pavement marking program to be completed by August 15th, not to exceed $19,725.38.
So moved, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to post the temporary no parking signs on the listed streets below for the all-claim proceedings.
So.
Second.
Discussion. Detective Chapp, Detective.
No, I just said, roll call on August 1st, and we're going to move it to August 4th.
Roll, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Item number four is just informational for the board, the sheriff's office, another OVI traffic on, in July 18th at 6:00 PM, starting on Whipple at the same location we did the last time. And then at 8 o'clock, we're going to move it around according to, by St. Michael's Church at 8:30, at 10:30 on Ford Road. And then on August 15th, they will have another one here on Eastern Street, down by Old Station 4. That one there is a pretty big one, and the board is invited to, to come to that one, as they are the others, but if you want to do ride-alongs, contact Sergeant Purdue, he can give you the paperwork.
August 15th.
August 15th, others against drunk, against drunk drivers will be there, there'll be a lot of reporters there. A family for the woman that got killed down by a park, you know, on Rome Works there. Ron said this is one of these, they're really, like, they're going to, 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 both of these. And item number five is the 55th Street Bridge update. If it does not rain tomorrow morning, and they can get the striping done, it will open tomorrow afternoon. They can get the striping, everything is pretty much, they got Garber all up today.
Means all the way over.
Next week sometime.
Means all the way over to jail tomorrow, I'll have to drive around to Kalamazoo.
I think it looks great, I, I'm just going to get through, drive again. I took Mr. Lina there last week, while they were paving it. Probably go open up that in the front.
Folks in Canterbury, I know will more than appreciate that.
That mean, is that going to take that Garber line there too? From the one entrance and.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that's going to open everything back up.
All those people are going to be cleaning. I think it's been closed for about two, three years.
Yeah, it's been three years, I think, from, I mean, the bridge was, the temporary bridge was there letting traffic go through 55th, but the, the side street's been closed there for three years. And I think they've torn us from the county today for everyone.
Yeah. Thank them again this morning. Tell them off, beep for them when I cross tomorrow.
It's gonna take us to zoning. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Falk.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one is the monthly report for June.
With the Creek pretty well gotta be finished out now.
Wicker Creek is filling up very rapidly, yes. I would guess maybe between half dozen and 10 lots.
Left.
Yeah.
And then Lexington Farms, of course, that's still not technically platted.
What is platted in Lexington Farms is everything south of Joe Crossing Street. Everything north is unplatted at this time. I had a meeting with the developers and they're looking at it because they realize you quite correct, townships run out of vacant lots, they're new homes in a hurry. Which is, which is nice that people are really here, but it's, it's gonna take a while to catch up of lots. We do have, there will be a zoning amendment coming up in August to create a prospect to rezonate an area along Mount Pleasant from about 18 acres near where Mount Pleasant takes the bend. There's a large house on the property right now to rezonate. Our one single-family residential with three lots, property with 40 lots. But again, that's by the time you get in there, redo that, plat it, design it, construction and new lots in there wouldn't be until next year, well into next year.
That's good. Opening interest, going back.
Yes, it is. More streets for joy, I assume, yes. She's looking forward to that, I know.
Thanks on that.
And then zoning number two, we have six nuisance abatements for this evening. Have we asked for later?
Yeah, I'll ask for, or I'll make a motion on 2A through F. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. J. Vases?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
I just, if I could, I want to go unrecorded and say that the, last year, it took, we would have two full crews go out and do nuisance abatements, two trailers, two sets of everything, all the equipment. It would take until the meeting day to finish everything. This year, we have two guys go out, two, two men go out and do all of the nuisance abatements, and they are done only early. So I had a trustee who would always ask me, he said, do you think they're doing these right? It seems like they should be getting done faster. We have two crews out there, two full crews. And he was right because this year, we have two people, a crew of two, that goes out and does all of these abatements, and they're actually done a week early.
Right. I'd like to echo that because the crew that keeps up has done a great job with the weather. Yeah, we're working out a couple of different techniques and things along with our, our crews and people, so they've done a great job.
I think it speaks to the work ethic of individuals, step down there, under proper guidance and direct direction with everything else for balancing, so. Good job by you guys who have maintained that.
Thank you.
That'll close zoning, or that'll fix to the Parks Department. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Schaller.
Gentlemen, the first item on the agenda this evening for Parks is our monthly report. Just a couple of informational items. Our Quick Start Summer Task Program will begin next week on the 15th. Registration is still open. And our joint effort with the Stark County District Library and the Plain Branch has begun with the senior programming that includes a different speaker series three days a week for the next three weeks. And we had our second one today, and are moving forward. And it's, it's pretty educational and pretty interesting. The topics vary day to day, so we're pretty pleased to have that new program along. And of course, Park-a-Balooza a week from Saturday.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Nothing for the law director, communications, Ms. Campbell?
I'll turn item number one over to Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Yes, this is an email communication was addressed to the trustees and myself, and it says, Dear Sirs, I wanted to take a moment to compliment you and your office on performance of Plain Township employees Stephanie Mebsker. Yesterday, I had what I thought was a simple zoning question. I wanted to know what requirements there were, if any, to run a small internet-based business for my home. I expected at most a simple yes or no answer, and then I planned to pursue further details on my own. I was very pleasantly surprised when the woman who answered the phone turned out to be not only very professional and friendly, but a wellspring of information and knowledge as well. Have you ever been in that situation where you know so little about something that you don't even know what you don't know? I think we've all been there. It becomes impossible to formulate questions because we don't see the roadblocks and difficulties. Ms. Mebsker answered all my questions, and even those I didn't know I had. I called looking for an answer, but what I found was a guide. Like most homeowners in Plain Township, I work hard for my money. I supervise 40 employees on my job. I'm a busy man. I think the best thing I can say about News Mebsker is that my one phone call to her probably saved me three other phone calls I thought I'd have to make. She is efficient, knowledgeable, patient, helpful, and I could hear her smile over the phone. I certainly hope any future direct contact I have with Plain Township offices ends up being equally informative and refreshing. And we are lucky to have her. Plain Township is lucky. Regards, Dan Cook.
Thank you, thanks.
Is there another one?
Okay, yeah. Thank you. That is from...
Sylvia Papadopoulos?
Yes, Sylvia Papadopoulos to the board of trustees. And she wants to commend the Plain Township Fire Department's Chief Don Snyder at the central station, his captain and the forefiremen that came to my aid. I was affected by last week's storms. Immediate help, concern, and advice were given to me by the compassionate captain and his men when I, as a senior citizen, requested aid in getting the water out of my basement. Plain Township Fire Department is the best fire department in Stark County. With heartfelt gratitude and thankfulness, Sylvia Papadopoulos.
Truly grateful, because...
Helped her out considerably, Chuck.
Yeah, yeah, she's, it's a nice letter from her, and, you know, it's nice to hear that, you know.
I gave the original. Yeah, I gave the original that you gave me to Chief Schaller to share with the guys. And we received many phone calls about, about those types of things, so. Especially for the board, putting in place the review strike off to South. Thank you, board.
So that'll close our communications. It's gonna take us portion of meeting, public speaks. If there's anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the board, just ask you to state your name and address for the record. We just got a couple of observers here.
I think so.
Nothing for public speaks. It's gonna take, close that, take us concerns, trustees, if we have anything, and my fellow board members. Concerns of the fiscal office, sir? Okay, it's gonna take us approval of minutes. I'm gonna so move on June 24th, 2014, meeting minute approval. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. J. Vases?
Yes.
There is a need for executive session, so be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session to 7:00 PM. For this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Revised Code 121.22G for the purpose and consideration of whatever compensation of a public employee or official, three conference with the law director or other retained counsel concerning pending or imminent court action.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. J. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.